Test one, two.
[Music]
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 Speak to it if you're.
During eleven B, we will, I will grant them the opportunity to speak to the council on that with dialogue back and forth.
Very good.
Constructive dialogue, of course, from both sides, including city council. All right, perfect. Input from the public is next on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the public or the council on anything that's on this agenda, something you'd like to see on a future agenda? Please step up to the podium, my right, your left, state your name and address for the record. Input from the public.
Probably would be best to wait. Yep. Yep. May not have a long wait.
All right, perfect. No input from the public going on to seven. Council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
Go ahead.
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Scott.
Um, I have a couple people that I talked to about ethnic fest. Uh, they loved it, thought it was great, uh, great time over on Saturday. Uh, so thank you to, um.
Two Rivers Main Street.
Main Street.
Yep.
And, um, all the staff that helped with it as well. Um, also I've been in communication with a, a woman that, um. Accesses the Roosevelt corridor quite often. Um, and she was pleased to see that the blighted property has finally been taken care of. Um, she had messaged me just out of the blue all of a sudden and said, guess what's happening? It's like, what? And then she went to explain what was going on. So thank you to the city staff that, uh, took care of that. That's been something that's been. Going through the courts and police department, I know for quite a long time. So it's.
Yeah, I didn't list that, but if I might, yes, that, uh, enforcement of the nuisance properties ordinance is something that's seeing more attention. And that was an abatement effort, uh, after every effort to get voluntary compliance and kudos to. Uh, community development, to the police department, public works who provided the equipment and personnel to do it. We've. Had a lot of positive feedback from the community on what they saw.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was nice to see that area cleaned up now. So, and that's all I have.
Right. Anybody else?
Jeff. Yeah, I got a few. Um, now that the summer is almost over and we should have a pretty good rundown of how much it costs for the splash pad. Somebody had called me and asked me. What was the cost per day beyond that?
I'll get you a number. I don't have one off the top of my head, but, uh, we'll get you our best number. And it would be effectively, I'll tell you upfront, because we're doing a metering change, it'll be water consumption for the splash pad. And the restroom building and a heck of a lot of irrigation. We're making measures now for separate metering, but I can give you our best estimates out of that, Jeff. I wish I had a number on the number of kids that used it as well, not, not your question, but it's been pretty impressive.
Been heavily used, including even on ethnic test.
Yeah, but I, uh, will get you a best answer to that by the next regular meeting if that's acceptable.
At, uh, water, the splash pad runs off a timer, so it's not like the water's on all day.
Correct.
Only when people are there.
Yep. I believe it's four minutes. Correct, Mike? Correct. Thank you.
I'll let her know that we'll get the numbers back to her. And also I, same, same person, um, and she wants to know if there are any concerns brought up by council thinking about the whole. Ice rink there. Ice rink is an ice rink and there's a big slope going to it. Isn't anybody concerned about little kids trying to escape going off the end? If there is, it's probably a four percent gradient decrease in there.
To my knowledge, Mike is looking to address that with hay bales, much as what they use in a lot of ice rinks. Um, Mike, do you want to jump up and speak to that quick? Please, but I do believe that is the plan is to outline that with hay bales from my knowledge.
And it is unusual. We'd, we'd never be able to freeze water at an angle like that's for sure, but, uh. And synthetic ice is wonderful, but it is not as slick as realized. The other thing is if there are little kids there with their parents. I'm sorry, there's a big level area over what is now the splash pad. I hope it didn't suck all the air out of the room though, cause.
There's not much more to add. There, there is a probably approaching a four percent slope. Uh, as you, yeah, the, the run in front of the community house, most of it's two percent or less. Um, you know, I'm not an expert in the rinks necessarily, but the landscape architect and the guy who installs the rinks, uh, we're confident that it'd be. Manageable with our slopes. Uh, so hopefully those experts kind of know what they're talking about. We are looking at straw bales for the. Uh, the grass edge of the rink this year away from the seating wall. And then maybe in future years, um, been working with, um, some companies that get a quote for a rail as well, so.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Um, then this one I just got like yesterday. Sorry, Ben, I didn't get to bring this one up to you. Uh, excessive speeding again on Forest Hills Drive. I think it's Forest Hills Drive. On the north side. All right, that, I just told her I'd bring it up. And then a gentleman called me and he wanted to know when we can have a discussion again brought up about the ATV, UTV use on the streets.
Jeff. That is something we can look at and look for a future agenda. Maybe we'll start with a work session on that one to, uh, get some dialogue going again. And see where that takes us.
That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just anticipating the question, I had sent a kind of a terse, that's a light way to put it, email to Charter Communications on, uh. Saturday regarding the status of are still not going out over the cable system. Pointed out, I'm embarrassed. They should be embarrassed as long as this is taken. And oh, by the way, the citizens that miss having these meetings on cable are their subscribers. Cause it's only out there on spectrum or not on spectrum. Um, didn't, didn't get a response, so I called it about four twenty today and we still didn't get a definitive timetable other than to. Hear that the group that handles public education and governmental access is mighty busy. Uh, I don't think I'm being too cruel to say there, there's not the kind of return in public education on governmental channels. As maybe other areas like getting ESPN back on the air. But, uh, we're at least trying to make some noise and say, A, this is an embarrassment. We feel it. You ought to share it. And those are spectrum customers that are still tethered to cable. That want the meetings brought into their living rooms, so.
Kind of sad, been going on for months.
It is, it is, and I'm, I'm beyond explanation for it. Every, every so often we get told that. The completion date is getting closer. Well, I sure as heck hope it isn't going farther away, but closer doesn't cut it. So, thank you. That was, that was a preemptive staff strike on that one.
It would be nice to get another free year out of it for as long as we've waited.
We are, yeah.
We should really.
See if they ever need anything.
Yeah. I've got some complaints on garbage and garbage cans being left out all week. Um, that just came to me prior to us getting started. So Ben, I'll reach out with you. Uh, before the end of the meeting, please remind me. And I will get you that address, but I did get it from other people too that sporadic places. A reminder, you got 24 hours. Put your garbage can out to the front when it's dumped. Twenty-four hours, bring it back in. Um, people do get kind of nitpicky about that and we get a lot of complaints on that, believe it or not.
Actually, I think noon the day before till noon the day after. It is a 24 hour window.
24 hour window.
And we incessantly remind folks of it. Uh, in newsletters and other things, but it makes the neigh, whole neighborhood look tacky.
Yep. All right, on to, um, council reports from boards, commissions and committees. Anyone have to report on anything? Darla.
First one is Main Street and Scott, thank you for your, your, um. Your input on that. Um, and it's always nice to hear that people are happy with events that you're putting on. So. This year was really great. I mean, the forecast was the weather was not going to be good. Turned out to be awesome. Um, the crowd was fantastic. And many of the food vendors sold out of food. And reports from the, uh, craft vendors were that sales were very good this year. And one thing, um, is that, that we are going to try for, for next year is a, a increase. In craft vendors and the goal is to have, um, uh, three full blocks of vendors. And one thing that we tried to do this year was not to duplicate food choices. So we didn't not, as in the past, we, we had had two Greek. Um, trucks and then two pizza vendors. We don't want to do that. We want to get new fresh stuff in. So if you were able to make it, I hope you all had a good time and, uh, we'll be back next year as well. And then just, uh, a reminder that the beer and wine walk is coming up and. Um, and then there's going to be the holiday parade. Other than that, that's about all. We're really starting to wind down in our festival season. Which is a shame, but you know, all good things come to an end, but it just gives us more time to gear up for next year. So. Um, and then with EAB. With the front yard vegetable garden. There's been some really nice things that have happened in this past week. The first thing is that the United Way contacted me. Um, and they were interested in having me speak at their, um, hunger coalition. And, um, and they also have a housing coalition. So I got in touch with Elizabeth. And her and I sat down with Ashley and, um, Angelica down at United Way and. We're going to be partnering up with them on some really fantastic, um, uh. Ideas and things that we could do together. So the, uh, this all stemmed from the front yard vegetable garden, but they're hu, behind it a hundred percent. Grow it forward is behind it a hundred percent. The school district is behind it a hundred percent. Uh, one thing that, uh, based on a, a, a suggestion from a former. Um, environmental advisory board member, we are going to have a, um. A front yard sign. Contest with the kids in the district so that, and we will probably need. Your input to see which one is going to be picked to be on the sign. Um, another thing too, that has occurred because of the front yard vegetable garden is, um. Right now we're just trying to figure out the day and time, but Shay Sortwell and I are going to be on C hay for news. He will be talking about, um, AB three seventy-nine. Um, which I'll speak more about that here in a minute. And then I'll talk about the front yard vegetable gardening. Another thing that happened is that, um, I was invited to talk down in Madison. Um, at the public hearing for AB three seven nine. And that is the preservation of. Let me find it. I don't think I brought it with me, but anyway, it, it has to do with his bill along with, uh, the co-sponsor is, um, Andre Jacques. And it's basically to preserve vegetable gardens. Um, their whole, their whole impetus is the fact that people should have the opportunity to take care of themselves. They should have the opportunity to grow produce because it's so damn expensive at the stores. Uh, we need to be able to put healthy food on our tables. So, uh, he and I will, um. We, I'll be at the public hearing for that and then he and I will also be on the radio. So. That's kind of what's going on with this. I mean, this has really got legs and. Um, we've gotten a really good input from people outside the community and actually Two Rivers is really being mentioned quite a bit now. When it comes to, uh, especially like, um, property owner rights. So it's, it's a good thing. So hopefully we get more people participating this coming year. So. Get the word out, please.
Good job. A lot of community outreach there. So good work there, Darla. Anybody else? Bill? Oh, nope.
I have a couple.
Oh, Scott, go ahead.
Um, from the public works committee meeting, um, leaf collection will be starting soon. Um, our director of public works has a different plan this year for leaf collecting to hopefully. Ensure that all the leaves get picked up. Last year I know we, we had some complaints that their leaves were sitting for a week, couple of weeks. Um, so there's going to be a new plan coming out pretty soon with that. Um, sidewalk repair that is ongoing or will be starting. This week, next week? Today, starting today, um, for all backlog sidewalk repairs that need to be done. Um, and. Um, we did talk about snow removal, uh, from the last meeting. Um, we are going to continue using, um. The Marina, Seagull Marina, the New Cemetery and Vietnam Park. Um, the beach will be used in an emergency type situation if needed. And, um, we'll focus, they'll focus on using the northern parking lots. Where they're kind of just out of the way. And if they are needed, we'd use, or they would use, um. Those socks that you can put around it to try to contain any material from leaking out of it if it has to be used. Um, so just those are some of the things we talked about at the public works committee meeting.
Good work and thank you, Matt. Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Good job. Thank you, Scott, on that. Anybody else? All right, then Greg Buckley, you're up. City managers' report.
Okay, we do have a couple of different invited guests, uh, identified. First up, uh, if Chief Dave Murak would come forward from our fire department. For the introduction and swearing in of new firefighter Alex Stottinger. Double check with fire and we're not over capacity for the room. So we're good so far. So, yep, welcome, chief. Welcome, Alec.
I'm pleased to be up here to introduce and swear in our newest full-time firefighter paramedic. Uh, Alex Stottinger. Uh, to give you a little bit of background on Alex. Alec is a two thousand thirteen Two Rivers High School graduate. He's a longtime resident of the city of Two Rivers. Which we'd like to see get hired on our fire department. He's joined here today by his mother, Mary, his brother Brandon. His girlfriend Sarah and his aunt Nancy and uncle Ron. And some of the members of B shift are in the back, the on-duty crew. After Alec graduated from Two Rivers High School, he probably served in the United States Marine Corps for five years. After being honorably discharged from the Marine Corps, he developed an interest in firefighting. And went through the LTC fire medic program. During this program, he interned at the city of Two Rivers Fire Department. And after this internship, he graduated in two thousand twenty-two. He was hired part-time and in August of this year, he applied for a open full-time position. And was approved by the fire and police commission as. For employment full-time. He starts his recruit training today, or he did start his recruit training today. Upon successful completion and one-year probationary period, he will be brought on and brought back to have his badge pinned in one year. So Alex Stottinger.
Please raise your right hand with me. I am Stottinger.
Stottinger.
So I'm certified as part of the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the States.
And the Constitution of the United States of Washington.
Constitution.
And I will basically discharge the duties.
Discharge of the duty.
Of fire, fire and paramedic. For the city of Two Rivers.
City of Two Rivers.
For the best of my ability.
To my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Got to say, we're fortunate in both police, fire and throughout our departments, the caliber of people that we've been able to recruit and retain. Just the latest example, uh, after service in the military coming home. We appreciate it. Uh, next up, we do have on the agenda, uh, and by the way, any friends and relatives that. Wish to leave the room, you're welcome to stay for the whole thing because these are really fascinating meetings, but you can feel free to exit as well.
Fascinating.
Yeah, yeah. The rest of you are going to make stay till the bitter end. No, uh, next up, we, we have a number of folks here that are associated with the Two Rivers Family Swim Center. Including members of the board directors. I don't know who all the speaker or speakers will be, but you're invited up to the lectern here. If you'd like to introduce yourselves, council members have copies of the, uh, presentation and we've got it up on the screen as well. For, uh, folks at home to follow along.
Hi, I'm Julie Pusto. I'm the administrative director of Creative Learning Two Rivers Daycare, forty-four oh four Bellevue Place. Um, I have been the administrator for over thirty-four years. Um, I'm here to tell you that we have been. Uh, in partnership with the Two Rivers Swim Center for numerous years. I can't even remember how far that goes back. Not only with the childcare center, but I know they've, um, been an asset and. Uh, a generous partner with other organizations, boy scouts, girl scouts, um, our fire department, in fact. Um, the schools, uh, running a nonprofit five oh one C three for over thirty-four years. I can tell you it's a weird. Situation that we share with the swim club. If they dissolve, we're, we're owned by a cloud. If a five oh one C three goes out of business, poof. There's no one that owns it. It's, they're, they're supposed to give it to another five oh one C three, any assets they have. I can't imagine there's a lot of five oh one C threes that want to take over the swim center. Um, and I think it would be, uh, a shame for Two Rivers to lose that. I am recommending, in my opinion, that Two Rivers look at this as an asset for the community. Manitowoc has their swim center. They have the YMCA. We are surrounded by water. The lake, our rivers, maybe changing the focus to, um, an educational swim and safety center. That is also a recreational, more inclusive for the community to focus on safety for the community. My fear is if we lose this asset for the community, it's going to sit there as an ugly, empty, nothing. For the community and a liability where you could turn this into. A little gem for Two Rivers when you're looking to get people into the community as far as what we have for our family. And not only it's fun and it's recreational, but it's safety for the children. The high school has swim lessons, they do. But if you have tiny little humans, you're going to know that the high school is not the best place to start for your beginning swim. It's, it's deeper where, um, the swim club, the swim center. Um, has narrow areas and can accommodate the tinier people. It's important to remember the safety factor. The high school can't accommodate any more swim lessons than they do. Um, there's that factor, but it would be nice if we look at it as part of the community. I know in nineteen ninety-one, when I was a very young new director, we went to the city. And they helped us move from the basement of a church to where we are now. And I know there's grants and there's monies available. If you partner with the swim club, swim center, sorry. Um, whether it be for health and safety, whether it be for community involvement, for children's activities. Um, I know the, the city doesn't want to run. A swim, uh, swim center, but at the same time, you've got a board of volunteers that have been doing this for years. That you can tap into, that can be under the guidance and report to the Two Rivers Rec Department. Um, and work with you so we can keep this asset in the community if we all work together. Um, that's just my two cents and I hope you guys do consider partnering and saving the swim club and making it. An asset, a continual asset for the community of Two Rivers.
Julie, that was awesome. Thank you. Um, so I am Amber Gates. Um, I am going to be speaking to you tonight and giving a lot of the presentation. Um, I love seeing the support that we have here tonight. It's an awesome thing. Um, I also have Heather Feist to my left. She will also be sharing some things with you guys. And then we also will have Mark DuPatt helping with this presentation as we go on. Um, so it's fun to see some familiar faces up here. Um, so I'm hoping at the end of this that we're going to work together and make something great for Two Rivers. Um, so we're going to start off with who we are. So who we are, we are the Two Rivers Family Swim Center. Um, so on this place has been around for fifty-eight years. Um, I grew up there. I learned to swim there. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of Two Rivers. I believe I swam with Adam back in the day at the good old Two River. Two Rivers Family Swim Club. It was a club at one time. Um, so we have three heated outdoor pools. Um, one does have a diving board. Um, we did become a five oh one C three in two thousand seventeen. Um, I'm not sure Mark would have more of the info of why we did become that. Um, but. Okay.
Mark, turn it up to the microphone. Yes.
The, the year before that in two thousand sixteen, um, there's, we've been basically doing Band-Aid fixes to the pool, to this one, to the pools. For several years and it became a realization that we needed to do a more permanent fix. So we contacted a pool contractor, Newman Pools, actually. And asked them to look at what we needed done. And because the pool was built in nineteen sixty-five, it, the, the, the. We weren't up to the current code as he explained it. So with the work that we needed done, we would need to bring it up to code and it really became apparent that the only way to do that. Was to build a new pool. So. That's when we decided to con, look to convert to a five oh one C three. We were a five oh one C seven. Which is still a charitable, excuse me, it's still a nonprofit, but it's a nonprofit social club, not. A charitable organization. And the only way we could build a, to raise the capital. To build a new pool was to become a charitable organization. So that's why we converted. Um, unfortunately. With the conversion, before we converted, we were more of a social club. So the membership was more and. We had more support from the members to actually, because you were an actual owner, so you, there was an incentive to help out. Since we converted, unfortunately. There's less people volunteering to help. They consider they pay their dues, they pay their, they pay their, um. Um, fee for the year, their, uh, pass, season pass, depending upon what they have and that, that's all they need to do. So. Through the years, it, it's been getting worse and worse. And basically where we're at now, I'm probably getting a little off subject, but anyway, where we're at now this year, the, the, the state came in. And there's some, we. Things that were done or they say were done because the concrete is a different color. So. If you do repairs, you can replace ten feet of piping. If you do more than that, you need to do a site plan. And they think we did more than that. And they want us to do a site plan. I don't even know how to do a site plan when I don't even know what the work was done, other than I know they repaired some piping. But bottom line that, and I'm pretty sure we lost the heater, um, this year, but we've been struggling and, and I've been saying for years that we're. One major breakdown away from ending and that's basically where we're at. So we met this year as a board and decided that we were done. And we were going to try to. Come to the city to see if the city would take over the pool and we would partner with the city to raise the capital to build a pool.
He just said it all right there. He's jumping ahead. Okay, so that is how we became a five oh one C three. Thank you, Mark. Um, so how we do operate is on season and daily passes, swim lessons, concessions and donations. Mind you, we are a volunteer board. So everything we do is volunteer work. Um, so our mission statement, plain and simple, it is our mission to provide all community members with recreational access to a safe and friendly environment. That promotes healthy lifestyles through aquatic education and experiences. Um, so as we go on to the next slide that Mark was starting to kind of give us a foreshadowing of. Um, so what are we here for? Okay. We are here to build an outdoor community pool for all to enjoy. Um, so our ask is we want a partnership, a partnership with the city, um, for a new outdoor community pool. So how is this going to happen? Um, we would like to partner with you guys. Let's get a capital campaign going, kind of like you did for the Central Park. Um, obtaining grants, there's grants out there. Um, I have done a lot of research into pools in the state of Wisconsin. Um, for instance, Wapon got four point nine million from the neighborhood investment. Um, grant and that was for them to build a senior center. Um, so there's the money out there. Uh, we again are volunteer board members. We all have jobs and families. Um, so we just want help finding these grants. We know they're out there. And then obviously fundraising and just anything to add.
Just with the grants too, again, we're volunteers and kind of help. We're looking for someone to help us apply for those grants. We really don't know how to do them.
Yes, yeah. Um, so yeah, helping us find them and locate them and then obviously applying for them. Nope, okay. All right, um, next slide. Um, so why an outdoor community pool? Um, I, a lot of things I've been seeing on Facebook or people that have their comments of, oh. Throw the kids in Lake Michigan or, oh, drive to Manitowoc. Well. I think we all know Lake Michigan is a natural resource. I think we all know it can be very dangerous. Um, my husband is a captain of twenty years and if the waves are blowing, he wants me right by my son. Um, it is not safe. It is not safe for these kids to learn. Um, so obviously an outdoor community pool would be to educate people. So obviously, an outdoor community pool would be to educate people of all ages in water safety. Interesting statistic is the number one killer in ages one to four is drowning. And the number one prevention for that is education. So increase public safety, and encourages family time while providing fitness to the whole family. Promote socialization and community involvement, and an amenity to attract new families to the area. And one of the things that I came across was your Economic and Community Development Strategic Plan that I found. One of the things that you guys had said in your community development, and would you like to pass that over? Thank you. So this is the words I kind of just used from your strategic plan. Focusing on community development-related activities has become increasingly important to workforce attraction over the past decade. Many people today choose where they want to live prior to securing a job, and then they will work in that area. Fine, excuse me, then they will find work in that area. Two Rivers has a host of impressive community assets, but focus must be placed on features such as housing stock, public amenities, family welfare, the school's district ability to assist in recruiting families. So to me, that speaks volumes that you want to supply public amenities to attract families. And then the other thing that I thought was very interesting from your Economic and Community Development Strategic Plan was, while views of the lake and river shores are abundant, entry is limited to beaches, boat launches, and piers. Each of these areas can be dangerous for small children and can inhibit interaction and emotional, excuse me, emotional investment in these assets by young parents. Installing easy-access splashpads that provide safe interactions with water in a more controlled manner can draw users to an area and increase quality of life. So the splash pad is beautiful. Do not get me wrong, it's gorgeous. It's a great addition to downtown. However, it is not teaching these children swim skills. We were very lucky to have taught 200 kids, over 200 kids this summer. And I do believe, Mike, you have a waitlist currently for swim lessons. And can you give us some numbers? Do you know off the top of your head?
So folks know 31 on the level one waitlist and eight on level two.
Yes, yep.
That from our rec director.
Oh, okay, yep, that's right, for everyone at home. So there is, again, a huge need. I know I have people contacting me daily. They can't get into the why, they can't, they don't like the times, doesn't work for them. I believe the Manitowoc Aquatic Center also does, but again, fills up very fast. So yeah, that is why we need an outdoor pool. Anybody want to add anything before the next slide?
And another thought to think with the outdoor pool, you know, kind of sometimes you're, well, why does it have to be outdoor? And I do feel like for swim lessons, it gives you a child a whole different experience than being in a high school pool where it's probably warm, and they can learn how to swim in different degrees of weather to build those skills in case an accident would happen outside.
I want to add to that as well. With an indoor pool, there's going to be a more cost because you have more structure to it. And really with most of the people, like, most of our use is by kids. And they're off in the summer, in the winter they're in school. So having an indoor pool, just, I mean, it would be a lot of extra expense that you wouldn't need because the kids are going to be in school, other than on the weekends. So most of our use is by kids through the summer. A lot of them come there on their own. If they're 10 years old or older, they don't need parents' supervision, they can just come and swim. And that's what, the majority of what we get. We do get families though, too, later in the evening or on weekends.
So I believe we're on to the next slide. So then this is cities with outdoor community pools, which I will let Mark kind of take over.
What I did shortly after we started, we decided to go down this path. I just went and Googled "public schools in Wisconsin", and it came up with a list of the top 10 best public pools, cities with public pools in Wisconsin. And it kind of struck me that three of those cities who had populations either similar to or less than the city of Two Rivers. So I went ahead and researched some of those and looked at their population. I found their budget online of what their expenses are for the pool and what the tax revenue is, and that's what some of these are. New Holstein, the population is 2961. Unfortunately, I couldn't get, their budget information wasn't online, so I couldn't get that. But I'm just saying that if they can afford a pool and they have less than 3,000 people, why can't Two Rivers? Clinton, population 8932. Their budget expenses is 244,000, their budget revenue is 120, and their tax revenue is 164. Bearbu, which was 12,633, their budget expenses were 122. The revenue, I'm not sure, but I had to kind of try to read between the lines in the budget to get it. But I'm guessing that's what it is when I went into the expense portion of the budget. But the point of this is just to say that there's other cities out there that are, some of them smaller than Two Rivers, and they can afford a public pool, why can't Two Rivers?
All right, and that would be the next slide. So how does this align with the city goals? So what I had Heather pass out, this, to me, just some of the goals that you guys had put out that I thought that would kind of coincide. Focus relentlessly on fiscal new revenue streams and operational sustainability. Encourage and facilitate projects that will increase city tax base, both new construction and increased market value of existing properties. Deliver outstanding city services and innovations for both sustainability and to support future growth. Develop, implement, and act upon feedback mechanisms for local residents and businesses. Continue to grow a vibrant, sustainable, safe, and connected community while respecting our traditions and history to attract new residents, visitors, and new businesses. Address the need for additional tools and enforcement, oh, sorry, probably not that one. But overall, I think you kind of go where we're going with this, is that this is Yes, that we very much align with you. So what's so what's next is we would like to become an actionable item. We would love to start partnering with you with fundraising to get a new pool at some point. We're not asking for it tomorrow. We're not asking you to give us the millions of dollars for a new pool, but helping us get that. And then assistance with the grant writing, and is there anything you want to add? We do have all, we collected signatures of residents who are in support of the pool and even outside residents, and who would be willing to stop and shop while they're here. And I'm sure we can get more.
What we did is we wanted to look to get a sampling of how many residents that we could get in a short period of time that would support it. It's not an official
It's not an official referendum.
Yeah, it's not an official for a referendum. It's not signatures for a referendum. But the point we wanted to make, and we're willing to do that, if, hopefully the city council will just agree to partner with us for a community pool. If not, we're willing to put it on a referendum in a certain outlet with the boards. And this is just a sign of how many, and I think we have, I'm not sure what the pool was. I'm guessing around 200 or some signatures that we have people that support a pool. We also have testimonials, which will be shared.
Absolutely, you can scan them in and share them with council, put them out on our website.
Just wanted to show you that, how much support we have, and you can see from the audience, there are plenty of people that support a pool. And I think it would be a discredit to the community if we didn't retain a pool or we didn't retain a pool in the city. The only way that I can see to do that is if we don't have a pool.
And one thing I really want to, when I looked up your comprehensive plan, it was saying that the population is declining for Two Rivers. We want to attract new families. I have a, one of our board members' house was just bought from Green Bay residents, and they're commuting to work. And I think we need to start attracting these young families by providing services for them and amenities. And I think you did a great start with downtown, but I think this is another amenity that will just make our community a great tourism draw. There's a lot of factors that can come into play with us. And I do also want to share that we had been in talks with the West Foundation at one point. Obviously, COVID hit, and I believe that kind of went by the wayside. But West Foundation was willing to give us a matching donation if the city covered the operating expenses. Obviously, they don't want us to build this huge complex, then all of a sudden, we can no longer afford it. So, but obviously, it is a very common practice within these cities that we have looked that the city does take care of the operating expenses.
We also have some letters from adults and also some letters and pictures from some children that I wanted to pass around to share. And also, we have two children that we're going to come up and show you a poster that that was created at one of our pool bashes, from the children and what the pool had used for them. It was really little ones.
So, and there's a lot of testimonials. There was one where a girl wouldn't even touch the water at the beginning of the summer, and she was jumping in and having the time of her life. So it changes lives, it's changed. I know Barb has spoken of how it's changed her life. I think this is something that the kids need. And this is, I feel, our civic duty to get these kids the education they need, especially being in Two Rivers and Lake Michigan.
One other thing I'll add is, I've been probably for the last 12 years, been a very big part of the opening preparations for the pool. And we start typically the last weekend in April, every weekend in May. I put a lot of work into it, and several times I've asked myself why I do it. And to be honest with you, the day we open at noon and the kids come in and jump in the pool, that's why I do it. And I would really hate to see that no longer be an option for the kids in the city. Thank you.
Any questions, thoughts?
Anyone up here? Jeff, what are operating expenses for the year?
That, I mean, I'll be honest with you. That's hard to put a number on it. It's roughly about $60,000 a year. However, we have to remember that the only paid staff we have is the manager and the lifeguards during the three months of the summer that we're open. Everything else that's done is done by volunteers. So that along with, the system we have is 65 years old, so the operating expenses of a new system, it's not going to be comparable. So you can't really look at our number as to what it's going to cost for a new pool. That is kind of why on the slide, when I looked at some of the operating expenses of other cities that have pools, you could get that information from, if that makes sense.
Anybody else?
Like liability insurance and everything, if, say, this were to happen through the city, who would cover that? Would the city be responsible for liability insurance? Would the swim center be responsible?
The city would be. And right now, our liability insurance is a little bit, a little over $6,000 this year, with $6,300.
So yeah, that would be part of your operating expenses for the city.
Now, I don't know, you could use your power in the insurance industry to get a better deal than that.
Yes, they've been giving the city a shellacking when it comes to our renewal rates, this year at least, I can tell you that. It's out there. Yeah, that's just kind of the world. I just would note this was tonight for a presentation and appreciate the turnout. Council will have this on a future agenda, I think, to talk about what, more precisely, what does cooperation mean? I'll say certainly for staff to work with a community group to investigate grant opportunities, that's almost a given. We would do that. But many of the grant programs do require that the recipient, the owner of the facility being benefited, not all cases, but most cases, be a public entity. So that brings the question of city ownership, operating budget going forward. And I'm not, I'm not sitting here to be Debbie or Greg Downer by any means, because if this community wants to make a help with a capital investment and sees fit that it would support, yes, a raise in its taxes, because our spending in the general fund has only gone up 20% in 23 years. And we operate under levy limits that for next year's operating levy are going to allow us about $7,000 of additional tax levy. So it ain't easy, the job that council has in developing the budget each year, approving the budget. But there are a lot of considerations there, and I think we have to ask the community, if that ask is made, you know, what is a realistic operating budget going forward? And there are certainly folks that can help with planning that.
One other thing I'd like to share as well, is I did plenty of what our expenses were. But we have a season pass last, this, last year. I don't have, we don't have the 500s from this year yet. But from last year, our season passing was $24,000, and our guest income was $3,300, and split lessons with $5,000. So that's roughly half of, actually a little over half of what our operating expenses were. I just wanted to share that. The other thing I'll say is, and I understand that we can't, you're busy tonight, obviously. But we would be more than willing to meet with the council at a future date and discuss what partnership we want to have.
And obviously, I'll defer to the council on what the future direction there is. The Wapawn grant that was mentioned, I did a quick Google. I was not playing video games or anything here. It was $4.9 million from the Neighborhood Investment Grant Program. That was American Rescue Plan funds. That was a one-timer. Not to say there aren't other programs out there. But that was, it was a whole lot of money that flowed to a relatively few communities under that one-time program.
So, and who's to say that there's not more that's out there? And that's where we just don't have the means to look into that.
Would we be able to get this as an agenda item in your future?
We can. I think there's a lot of questions that have to be answered. I'm having Jack take a look, because I think we can put this on a referendum ourselves, without you having to go through the headache of putting the signatures. But Jack is going to, Jack is going to check the legality of what I just spoke of right there. I was having a side conversation with him. It's something that I'd like to propose, but I'm going to withhold on that until I get the legal authority to do such. Is that it, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I understand where you're coming from with the grant writing and helping with that, because obviously you guys aren't grant writers. We do have them here, so that would be a no-brainer. It's an investment of time, but that, right, that's doable.
It's an investment in the future of your community.
I agree wholeheartedly, and I'd be overjoyed to live in a community that says forthright, this is just Greg, it's not the council. By God, we want you to spend some money to fix the pool, build a new one, and by God, you can raise my taxes to do it. The jury's out on that. And quite honestly, it's going to take a reasonable business plan, because I'm not, none of us are sure right now what a referendum question would ask. Would it ask about authorizing borrowing for a capital contribution? The tougher thing is, over the long term, would the voters be willing to waive the levy limits? That aren't of our creation, but thank you, our state legislature and governor imposed on us. Because otherwise, there ain't a whole lot of room in the existing budget.
I'm a long supporter of the pool. I grew up there, as Amber stated. I love it. I would not want to see it go. But I know a lot of people are under the impression that the city can just grab some money and go and pay for it. And it really doesn't work that way. As Greg alluded to, we do have strict levy limits. And it's not easy. I mean, when we go into budget, it is very, very difficult. And it starts next week, and it's a grueling process, because we all want everything we can get. But at the end of the day, there's only so much we can spend, and I'm not a big promoter of spending more. I can tell you that much right now. I'm not the guy that wants to go raise everybody's taxes. I'm the exact opposite. I like to work within our means. And that doesn't mean that the swim club's not doable, maybe within our means with restructuring and the way things change. But it's not as easy as people think, because I see that on Facebook, not necessarily related to this comment, but the city can just go pay for that, go buy that, and it really doesn't work that way.
And that's how we're asking.
And the biggest thing is going to be operational from year to year. Capital would be easier to get away with than the actual operational of this from year to year and what that would cost. But they would need a pretty good budget plan for us to look at. Again, they'd have to pass some committees, and a lot of things would have to get, a lot of Ts would have to get crossed, Is dotted, so to speak, type of stuff. But as Jack looks that up, I think I would be good with putting it on a referendum at some point, once we get a better plan together. I don't think it's something that I would want to vote on as a council member, speaking as one, just to flat out put as a vote through this council. I'd want to give it to the city to vote on this one, because it's a, it's a pretty hefty ask.
And I understand that. Hopefully, you know, along with that, hopefully, we can continue with dialogue until then.
Absolutely.
You know, so that when that point comes, we're not starting from scratch.
Nope, and, and we're not. I've had a lot of conversations with you and with, perhaps I can't think of her name now, just blew by me, Anna Klein's mom. I can't think of her name. Bridget Klein, thank you. So I mean, you and Bridget, we've had many conversations, and we've brought up a referendum time and time and time again. So I mean, it'd be nice for the city. It'd be certainly something that we'd want to take a look at, but again, we need a lot of dialogue.
She actually does, um, she does have some numbers that she is going to pass out, actually, some operating. So and then Gia, Gia would like to speak quickly.
All right, go ahead, Gia. Do you want to bend the microphone down so we can hear you? There you go. No, that's okay. Just want to make sure people at home can hear you.
We should save our pool because it's very important to some family. And just very sorry, very sad that it's gonna go, and I just don't want it to go. So please be respectful and keep it in our hearts.
Nice job coming up here and speaking. That's not easy to do. So nice job on that. Anybody else want to touch base on this? Go ahead. Okay. You can follow up after Rochelle.
Rochelle Berry, 2839 45th Street. I know a lot of people don't know my son. My son has Polet syndrome. One hand doesn't have movement, missing his pectoral muscle. He is not safe swimming in the beach. He, this year, went into the pool, you know, for Diamond Board, because he felt safe there. I think you guys should really think about that. All the people that, all the people in Two Rivers, not just the ones that have their, all their hands in their feet, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to talk? Go ahead.
Oh, is this close enough?
Yep, yep.
Okay. I am Cade Lozoi. I was, I was a lifeguard for the Two Rivers Pool this year and last year. I also did swim lessons. And I'd like to just sort of elaborate on what I think this pool does. I think it's great. So there is this, there is a kid named Christine Ostrom, and she is a seven-year-old. She's very little. She's like up to her knees. And she comes to the pool every day with her family. And I teach, I teach level four swim lessons, which is like, most, most of them are like middle school age. And Christine, despite being a seven-year-old, because she comes to the pool every day, she has an opportunity to develop her skills. She can, she can, she's incredible for her age. She can do everything that we, we would expect someone like twice her age to do. And I really think that's because the pool is right there. It is in town. It's available for kids just to come, just walk, walk to the pool. Go there every day. It's, it's freely available. And I know earlier in, in the presentation that they gave, they mentioned like, oh, like people are saying, oh, just go to the YMCA. The YMCA, it's, I, I also work at the YMCA as a lifeguard. The YMCA, they, it's a lot more purposeful. Like you can't just come in there and have fun in the pool. It's a lot more, they have like strict classes. They have a strict schedule. It's not so leisurely. And something like the Two Rivers Family Swim Club, where you can go there every day and just have, have fun and be proficient in wa, in the water, just be, develop skills. I think that that is a very important thing for kids to have, to be able to have fun in the water. It's not just a fun thing. It's something that is genuinely useful for them developing their skills in the water. And yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
My name is William Otto. I live at 1800 Jefferson Street, and I know I've talked about this before. I feel like the Two Rivers Family Swim Center really needs to stick around, because there's, because it hasn't been updated since it was, since it was first put in place. And there's a, for older people that are handicapped and stuff like that, for like 75 and 80 years old that have a wheelchair, that can't get in, in and out of the, the pool without, without, you know, severe limitations, it's almost impossible. And I, I feel like that the older people that should be able to have a zero tolerance, like going into the pool, should be able to, be able to safely feel like they can go in there without getting, you know, without having a severe injury. That's my, that's how I feel.
Thank you, Rob. All right, anybody else looking to speak on this? Race to the mic.
The reason why I want the pool to be saved is because I learned a lot of skills there, and it's really fun. And I just feel like it shouldn't be closed down. I feel like we should help it and let it be longer. So that's why I want to help the pool.
Nice job.
Hello, I'm Lance Anderson. I worked at the pool this past summer and the year before that. I worked as a lifeguard there, and I know the past two years, the fire department has come in and done some training. And it really helped the lifeguards and the fire department hone their skills on water rescues. And it also, the swim club also opens up jobs for high school students. And some college students have even come back just because they loved it so much. So that's where I think we should keep it open.
Hi, my name is Julie O'Toole. We started going into the swim club about three years ago. And my son has always been super just like anxious about everything in his life. And the swim club has really like brought out friends that they meet there. It gives these kids, I also have a daughter, but it gives these kids something to do except electronics. Some of these kids are cooped up at home all day because their parents are at work. It's a great thing that the parents can come home, grab their kids, and go to the swim club. I think that the, the skills that they get taught, and the YMCA is always full for swim club, or swim lessons for the younger ones. I think my kids, the last three years, have become great swimmers. They love going there. They beg me every day to go there. And I really think it's like this opportunity that we have in our community, that it's not a long drive. It's easy to get to. And like the friendships that are built there, I can't even explain, I don't know, the community that they, they build at the swim club. Like if they're out of school, they don't get to see their friends a lot, but the swim club can bring them together and continue that friendship throughout the summer. And I think they could be doing a million other things and providing them exercise by swimming. And getting off their electronics is so important these days. So I just hope that you guys will really consider supporting a great opportunity for those middle school. For me, it's those middle school ages. They're awkward, and the swim club has really brought a community together for them. Splash pad is great. Not, middle schoolers aren't going there. It's, it's the little kids. And you're not going to learn to swim at a, you know, at a splash pad. They're great to get wet. They're a lot of, they're really cold. You know, heated pool during the summer in Wisconsin, great. I live right on the, the beach. Like, my kids don't want to go there. It's cold. Now they do. It brings a lot of sand to my house. I'd rather go to the swim club. It's a great opportunity for, like, I have made friends myself. Like, I just think for the whole family, I see older generation there, I see the younger generation there. And I just hope that you guys consider this as one of your top priorities.
Barb Schweitzer, 6735th Street. I've been a member of the swim club for 37 years. And although it's great for kids, it's also great for old people. If you're someone like me who has very damaged joints, I swim laps every day with a group of people in their 60s and 70s, and we love it too. And we enjoy having the kids there, but we enjoy the pool as well. I just, it was my husband's and my charitable life. I've donated thousands of hours and thousands of dollars to the pool, and I hope that the city will do the same. Thank you.
Christine Thielin, I'm not going to tell you how many years I've been a member. But I will tell you that I was born and raised at the swim club. My kids were born and raised at the swim club, and now my grandkids are born and raised at the swim club. And I enjoy boating, jet skiing, being at the beach, out on the river. And I am thankful every day that I have an opportunity, my kids have an opportunity, and my grandkids have an opportunity to learn how to swim at the swim club, because it has built confidence on the water. And I feel more secure, more safe, knowing that my kids can swim, that my grandkids can swim. And not so much just swim, but be able to tread water if they're ever given, put into a situation where, you know, a life-threatening situation. So I hope you consider supporting the pool. Thank you.
All right, well, we're back on. Jeff had a question. Go ahead, Jeff.
What kind of money would you be looking at?
Jeff, you're talking cap, the capital investment?
Well, yes. What, what city portion would end up being at the end of the day?
For the new pool or for, so for a new pool, we're not asking for anything from you guys. We would be the friends modeled after Manitowoc, friends of the Aquatic Center. So we would do a campaign, raise the money, raise the financial. The last time that a quote was given to us, we, this was pre-COVID, I believe it was 3 million. Okay. So again, we talked to the West Foundation, who was willing to do, I believe, a very hefty match at that point. Again, this was four years ago. We have not followed up since then. I do still think they would be very willing to contribute. So at this point, we're not asking for that. All we are asking for is operating expenses year to year. Operating expenses, if we would model after some of the cities that we had looked at, and we're not asking for fancy. We do not want Manitowoc. We do not want slides. We don't, I mean, okay, one slide, but we do not. We do not need the frills. I mean, I, I think at the end of the day, we're all here to, we're here for the water safety aspect of it. We don't need this fun nosark in Two Rivers. That's not what we want. So if we just did a base pool, say, 3 million, operating expenses, kind of looking at Wopon, I think was very comparable to us. I would say an operating expense year to year would be about 70 grand. You would obviously get that revenue, though. I mean, because at this point, we, our hands are done. I mean, we're still going to be there aboard, very much modeling after Manitowoc, the Aquatic Center. So basically, we would be the friends of the Aquatic Center. So that is, that is what we're looking for. We're not asking for millions of dollars. That is not what we want.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not.
I mean, if you want to give it, I will go.
It's my responsibility to ask hard questions.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you. And I just want to be very, very clear. We, at this point, are essentially a private, you have to have a membership to get in, right? And I think that's a misconception, is that we are an elite club. Maybe years ago, yes. We now, anyone can be a member. Anyone just has to pay the operating expense. You do not have to be a season pass holder. That's why with going with this, this would become a community pool for all to use. So any kid at this point can come and swim and have a place to go, safety-wise. So that is the other thing I would really like to clarify as well.
All right. Thank you guys so much for your presentation and your time. Nice job. All right, back to Mr. Buckley, status and update reports.
Future council discussion on the pool, I'll certainly consult with the council president. I'm going to suggest up top of my head, perhaps the October work session. This is more of a work session topic than to really dig into things. Counsel may see fit to put a committee together, but that October work session would be on the 30th. Could be on the 23rd, too, because there's five Mondays early June.
We can, we can take a look at that come October. That'll be perfect.
We'll plan for that. There's some staff homework that's needed. You know, the term referendum has been used. I think it's probably in the context of a levy limits referendum.
I mean, probably some dialogue even between us and the swim center to make sure we exactly know what it is they're asking for, what they're looking for, what they're looking for to be responsibilities of themselves and/or the city. I think we need to know that all in advance of that meeting.
We have a pretty good park planning firm that I would presume to get a couple free phone calls to. That does a lot of aquatic facilities as well.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
As far as the city manager's weekly report.
And Mr. Bruce just advised me that we can do an advisory referendum if council did so choose, so they did not have to go through signatures, FYI.
Yeah, the state still looks to do advisory referendums that pertain to possible spending.
Yeah, I mean, there are, there are statutes that require a referendum, as you mentioned, levy limits. Sometimes annexation petitions and things of that nature.
Not, not to go off the deep end, bad pun, but yeah, you know, levy limits, as I understand it, can either be one-time lifts or it can be in perpetuity, if you will. It can be for X number of years. But that, that's not advise, well, that's not advisory. Ultimately, that has to be a binding vote of the people to exceed our levy limits.
Advisory referendum isn't legally binding on, on the city, but it's obviously means by which the council can, can get an idea of where the citizenry, citizenry stands on a particular matter.
Not, not to get too far out, out ahead, but certainly if a, if a group is in good faith doing fundraising for a community facility like that, having an answer to that question about levy limits, even on an advisory basis from the community, could mean a whole lot. Because if they say, yeah, we're, we're open to it versus heck no, that can make a huge difference in proceeding. Because if they say, yeah, we're, we're open to it versus heck no, that can make a huge difference in proceeding with all that effort. Okay, uh, city manager's report for tonight, um, and I'll keep it fairly quick. In the area of recruitment, we have three ongoing recruitments. Public Works Maintenance Worker, there is a conditional offer that's being, that has been extended, and we're just pending final backgrounding. I hope to have somebody on board within two weeks there to fill that position. Our part-time building inspector position applications are open until the position is filled. And we do have, due to retirement, a police secretary, uh, evidence custodian position, very responsible support position in the police department, for which we're accepting applications through October second. Uh, over on Lincoln Street, things are pretty well wrapped up. Matt, are there any work items that are still ongoing? It's pretty much a wrap over there. Uh, Neshota Park, if you've taken occasion to drive through the park on Pierce Street, uh, things are coming along very well on the new destination playground, which is about a four hundred thousand dollar capital investment. Uh, city crews several weeks ago finished the sidewalks and the base pads where benches will encircle the playground. Uh, Northern, Northern Recreation, is it, Mike? Northland, thank you, is in place, safety surface to be installed the week of October two. This will be fully handicap accessible, really a, a first-class, um, investment in playground as, uh, supported through the city's capital budget. Grand opening again, Sunday, October fifteenth, ten a.m. to noon. Was mentioned earlier, um, Scott mentioned from the Public Works Committee, uh, the new approach. Could I call on you? I'm sorry, this is totally impromptu, but I expect you've explained this before, to talk about how we hope to improve the timeliness. Because man, Mother Nature sometimes decides to drop leaves on a schedule that doesn't match ours.
I figured it'd be up here. Um, the short of it is, instead of breaking the city into three areas, uh, east of the river, between the rivers, and west of the river, uh, we're breaking it up into fourteen different areas. Uh, why? Primarily, the way it's been done, uh, east of the river was done on Mondays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, between the rivers, and, uh, west of the river, south of the river, is on Friday. And crews would only work in those areas on those specific days, which means in some cases, the, uh, leaves would sit for upwards to several weeks. So what the intent is, uh, is to try and do a systematic approach, uh, during the beginning of the season. I anticipate that it'll work out as status quo has shown in the past. We'll start with section one and work all the way through section fourteen, um, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. As leaves increase, we'll start addressing where the heaviest leaves, leaf concentration is. Uh, so we might start out in area six, seven, eight. Um, and then, okay, the next large concentration of leaves will be here. Now, we're jumping around the city. How are we going to keep people informed? We're going to keep people informed through the city website and social media. So we're going to try and show where we are and where we're anticipating being. Um, so we'll try and give hopefully a two-day advance. And only when, uh, the leaves really get heavy, um, is when we're really going to have to take a look at, um, implementing this. So light leaves, moderate leaves, I think we can keep up more or less on a status quo basis, what we've been doing in the past. But we'll still call out, we're going to be in sections one, two, three. Um, Tuesday will be in areas four, five, six, and so on and so forth. So the biggest change is, um, we're no longer going to those segmented areas, east of the river, center of the, uh, between the rivers and west, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Um, people could be getting their leaves collected in a certain area on a Friday that was accustomed to being picked up on a Monday. Um, so it will be imperative that staff keep the residents, uh, constituents of the city of Two Rivers informed, and that can be done by, again, paying attention to the city website and, uh, social media. We'll possibly even take a look at our two digital signs downtown, uh, referring people to check those, uh, resources. Adam?
So you will be going, though, to each one of these areas, though, every week, correct? Um, even in the heaviest? My fear is those people that don't have social media or even have computers, and I'm talking about maybe the aging population, or that rely on services to come blow their leaves out for them to the street. Are they gonna, how are they going to get that information? And how are they going to enforce, I guess, their companies to come push those leaves out?
And that was one of the discussion points. And last year, since it was my first year, we did not make it through the city several times on a weekly basis. So one, we have to change or modify that expectation. It's a grandy, grand lofty goal, um, but realism strikes, we'll probably make it through the city in the moderately heavy, heavy times, um, once every two weeks.
Well, that's somewhat similar to what kind of happened last year.
Correct. So expectation, we'll say once every two weeks, gold, weekly. Yeah, you're gonna. As leaves fall, we'll increase the amount of manpower and equipment being used. Including, as we did last year, uh, Mike doesn't know this, but using park and rec staff.
Glad to know we planned that part out. Yeah. Our, our next, uh, utility insert newsletter is, uh, due to be completed by Friday, so this map will be featured. We'll try to advise folks that way. And, uh, I would also point out, the phone number for Public Works is seven nine three five five three nine. People know that already, and they, they call.
Well, again, nothing significantly changed, especially with the light to into the moderate leaf category. We'll still be going out there with our, uh, vacuums sucking up the leaves. It's once we start getting into those heavier accumulations, we'll be bringing in the front-end loaders, scooping it up, and, uh, putting it to dump trucks and hopefully keeping up in that fashion. So right now, anticipated mid-October, all dependent upon when leaves really start accumulating. Uh, that might be first of October, so we'll be flexible and address it when it comes. Right, thank you for the update.
Appreciate the thought and effort that's gone into this, and obviously consultation with the Public Works Committee. Stay tuned. Uh, tourism and room tax, we'd like to, uh, like to have our tourism director, uh, Brian Dean, come forward. Actually, Director of, uh, Explore Two Rivers, Inc., uh, funded through the city's room tax, to talk about what happened at last week's board meeting.
Thank you very much, council members, and thank you, Greg. Uh, yes, we did have our third meeting of the Explore Two Rivers Board of Directors last week. We had a full attendance of all voting members, plus our two advisory members representing relevant city agencies, parks and rec, and the libraries. The meeting, we handled a couple of very critical issues. One, we are on continuing and accelerating now that we're moving into the shoulder season or, uh, a non, or less event fulfilled season. We're going to accelerate the development and upgrades to our website, uh, creating more interactivity. We've been talking to firms that run bus tours, for example, that would like to see interactive itineraries that they can develop. And we have the capacity to do that. We're going to be upgrading that, the, the website, making it even better and, uh, and more interactive for its user base. Um, at the meeting, we had a great presentation by our Parks and Rec Department. The purpose of that conversation was so that next summer, when we have a heavy event season, we can have absolutely seamless coordination between Parks and Rec, their activities, our marketing and promotion efforts. This is something that's critical, uh, um, for the success of these events and for the better delineation and definition of our mutual roles. You're going to see an acceleration of our coordination and cooperation on those events as they relate to Parks and Rec, library, as well as events that are sponsored by outside organizations within the community, uh, civic groups, business organizations, and so forth. We are also beginning this week the development and the real mechanics of the twenty twenty-four Visitors Guide, which was discussed. We will be partnering, as we did last year, with our partners in Manitowoc, developing this guide. And, uh, we're, it's going to be a little bit bigger, a little bit better, least proportional representation in the name. And, uh, we're excited about going out and doing what we did last year, making sure that the ad sales in this magazine pay our costs. So there's no cost to the, to, to the, uh, the, the, the Explore Two Rivers budget, part of which goes into the general fund. Um, we also had a, uh, uh, in a discussion about what, uh, events and activities we can work in coordination with others in the shoulder season or the winter season. We developed some creative ideas. Those ideas will be forthcoming and, um, are available, will be available upon further discussion within our organization. We're very, very adamant that we need to develop activities, conventions, things of that nature. We're talking about things along the lines of gamers, conventions, and things that can be done outside that don't necessarily depend on, uh, snow conditions that can, that are unreliable these days. We also finalized our committee structure, where aside from the three statutory committees that put us in compliance with our tax status, uh, which are the Executive Committee, the Governance Committee, and the Finance Committee. We've established three programmatic committees that will deal with the mandate of our organization and the marketing and development and tourism investment components of our mandate as an organization. And we approved a mission statement at, at the meeting, which I will read to you very quickly. The Explore Two Rivers mission statement, it's very brief, is promoting travel to Two Rivers to experience its coveted natural resources and unique attributes to enrich lives and elevate local economic growth. And I will be happy to take any questions. If not, that's the report from the Explore Two Rivers Board Meeting Tuesday of last week. Thank you.
Um, related to local tourism, just wanted to share the most recent, uh, room tax revenue report. Uh, this is actually collections really through, uh, through July, because remember, it wasn't until the end of August that all July collections would be in. But, uh, if you look, the, the green bar to the far right of each month is the current year. Uh, I'll just cut to the chase. Year-to-date, twenty twenty-three, uh, we are, as of the end of July, collections, we stood a hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars. That is ahead of last year at this time. And again, you just have to look back four years, and you can see we are running at about darn near triple what the collections were, so.
I assume August is incomplete?
August.
Or a typo?
Well, no, August, we have, is not, those are, uh, it's very incomplete, and we expect a very favorable turnout. As a matter of fact, that's why I returned to the, to the podium. Um, although Dave does not appear to be here.
He's in his office downstairs.
There very well could be, uh, residual from July, when we get the preliminary August report as well. So, um, you know, you'll see a fully revised and updated, uh, revenue, uh, room tax revenue report. Um, when we get the preliminary August figures in, we should have, uh, um, some better news to tell, even better than what we have now, so.
Again, the, you know, the, the payments of room taxes collected in August aren't due to the city until the end of September. So I'm guessing maybe, uh, one or two individual vacation rentals or something. They've paid early. They had paid as of last Friday, the fifteenth. That's not the norm. Most of them, not, no surprise, come in shortly before the deadline, sometimes a little after. So, but year-to-date, collections attributable to the months through July were about eight thousand dollars ahead of last year's pace. So far, so good. Uh, just as far as recent events, we'd like to, thanks to the Wisconsin Region Studabaker, Studabaker Drivers Club, which competed to host the national or international meet, uh, which was based at the County Expo Center, but had plenty of activities that got those Studabaker collectors out and around the community, including a wonderful cruise to Two Rivers last Wednesday night with seventy-plus vehicles. A good example of, uh, local private group that took the initiative, but had great cooperation from Explore Two Rivers and from the Manitowoc Tourism Organization. Uh, Brian and I made a trip down to be part of the greeting, along with Mayor Nichols and Courtney Hanson from Manitowoc. Uh, met a, he didn't bring his car, but met a fellow from Finland, met some folks that had driven their car here from Washington State, Pottsville, Pennsylvania, home of the Yingling Brewery. Uh, thank you to, uh, Two Rivers Main Street, all of the sponsors, and all of the participating organizations and volunteers. We've already talked about, uh, another wonderful ethnic. Downtown blessed by great weather. Invited to the formal dedication of the Friendship Sculptor out here in Central Park East. That is Saturday afternoon at three P.M. Uh, guests include, uh, the mayor of Domaschlića, Stanislav Antos. Uh, uh, Mr. Antos has been here for prior visits as a member of their council and their Sister Cities Committee. Of course, in the, in the photo, Vaclav Fiala, the sculptor for the, uh, Friendship Table. And then, uh, Mayor Antos and the chair of their Sister Cities Committee arrive at O'Hare Thursday. They're here through the weekend, Saturday before the dedication. The high school students from Domaschlića that are spending time with host families and all of next week at our high school and here in the community will be arriving as well. So great work by the, uh, Sister Cities Committee, a community five oh one organization, actually under the Two Rivers Historical Society, and all of their volunteers. This, this is good stuff. Um, Greg?
Yes, sir. Uh, on that note, we have a Slovakian foreign exchange student. And he, and plans to be there to see some of those, the Czech students.
That'll be wonderful.
Yeah.
That'll be wonderful.
He wanted, when he found out about it, he did say, he said, I would really like to go to that. So he's kind of excited for that to happen.
Awesome, awesome. That is great. Um, the, the, the experience for our local kids to have this international cultural exposures is huge. It's really huge. Um, Wester Public Library, uh, toward the end of this month, will be having their fall book sale, September twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. We're headed into winter, that's shoulder season, so if you're, if you're a reader, it only picks up this time of year. Great opportunity. Um, there is a K nine fundraiser for the Two Rivers Police Department K nine unit out at Port Sandy Bay. That is Wednesday evening, October fourth, from four P.M. to eight P.M. Portion of the proceeds from great pizza and whatever else you buy out at port will go to the K nine program at the TRPD. Uh, locally Bank First will be hosting Free Shred Events. The next Free Shred Event, if you've got garbage bags full of documents that you don't want to just toss out with the recycling, that is Saturday, October seventh, from nine to noon at Bank First here in Two Rivers on Lake Street. That same morning, on the seventh, from nine to one, uh, the Two Rivers Optimists and, and our Two Rivers High School Octagon Club will be holding their electronics recycle event. That is in the senior center parking lot, uh, behind the community house. They're more than happy to help you unload your things. I'm looking for a link Lisa was going to be checking with, uh, the Octagon Club, uh, as far as what sort of fees might apply to some of the items. But great chance to get some of those unneeded, uh, old electronics out of your basement and properly disposed of. Uh, the, um, Neshota Charitable Foundation, which does a lot of great programming, uh, programs supporting local youth, uh, will be holding the annual Dick Roor Memorial Badger Night at, uh, at the Wood Type Museum again this year. Uh, there's a social hour with great food and drink, and usually a UW-affiliated speaker. Uh, Bill Jarts will again, from Channel Two, will again be emceeing the event. That's worth the cost of admission in itself to, to hear Bill Jarts repartee. Again, tickets are available in advance through the Neshota Charitable Foundation. Always a great, great community event. Out at Woodland Dunes Enchanted Forest, Saturday, September seventh, that's going to be a busy weekend, uh, on the, the seventh and eighth. Friendly costumes are encouraged, candlelit trail, and meet some of Mother Nature's favorites. Favorite and fun costumed animals. No animals were harmed in that. Uh, Two Rivers Senior Center is again doing their community Thanksgiving meal over at the Senior Center on Thanksgiving Day, November twenty-third. They're always interested in volunteers. It's a great community event, and it's great to see it back after COVID and all of us withdrawing back into our households. So, uh, volunteers are encouraged, or if Thanksgiving Day, you might be spending it alone, or would like to spend it with the broader community, get signed up and enjoy this great event. Uh, I just want to plug, and I know several council members tuned into it. Uh, I did have the opportunity to appear, actually taped it last week, but on Newsmaker Sunday, this past Sunday, with local broadcasting legend Tom Zalaski on Channel Five. And, uh, that is available through the link shown there. That link is displayed out on our Facebook page, but it's always fun to talk about our community and the good things happening here. And, uh, Tom would ask a question, and then six minutes later, we'd come up for air, and he'd say, it's time for a break. So that's how my daughter described it to me, at least. That is my report, looking at the grill of some honest-to-God chrome and a Studabaker, uh, in downtown T.R. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move right along. Consent agenda under number ten. Going to A, presentation of minutes, there are two. We have a city council work meeting, our city council meeting, I beg your pardon, for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and a city council work session of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are six. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, department reports for August of twenty twenty-three, there are eleven. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under D, finance reports for July of twenty twenty-three, there are. Under D, finance reports for July of twenty twenty-three, there are four. And the recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Finally, under E. Review of a conditional use application for the operation of a drive-through. Accessing Fifteenth Street at fifteen oh nine Washington Street. Submitted by David Church applicant and owner. The recommended action is a motion to schedule public hearing for October second, twenty twenty-three at six P M. As recommended by the plant commission meeting on September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The recommended action for the consent agenda as a whole is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on that. Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Bonnie, council discussion. See none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, then city council formal items, we have four of those. Under A, we have a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of up to three hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. In sewage system revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-three. And providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto. And approval of related four hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred eight dollars financial assistance agreement. For the clean water fund loan. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt that resolution. Greg?
Uh, yeah, just real briefly, as council is aware, most of our improvements to the water and sewer systems in recent years have been funded through loans. From the state's environmental loan program, a couple of weeks ago, council approved. Twenty twenty-three project borrowings from the safe drinking water loan program for water system improvements. This is clean water for sewage systems. You might question why the two numbers in that resolution title. The actual borrowing is three hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. That is a twenty-year borrowing at two point one four four nine percent or a heck of a good rate in current times. And we are receiving principal forgiveness. So effectively. We're, we're getting four hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred eight dollars in financial assistance. Little over eighty-two thousand dollars is effectively written off, principal forgiveness funded with federal money. So the lower figure of just shy of three hundred thirty thousand dollars is the thirty, excuse me, the twenty-year borrowing. At about two point one five percent.
All right, looking for a motion on that. Thank you, Bill. Seconded by Jeff. Any council discussion? It is a resolution. Recall as a roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Hidry?
Aye.
Bonnie Shumelinas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
All right, on to B, resolution pertaining to offering certain city services within the property of the Blue Heron Condominium Association. The recommended action is a motion to read and adopt the resolution. Greg?
Okay. Council in July, at the July work session, had some discussion with representatives of the board. Of directors for the Blue Heron condo association regarding the scope of services provided or not provided. To the association by the city. Blue Heron was developed in the early nineteen nineties. It's one of four condominium, residential condominium developments in the city. Where the developers proposed and the city approved private roadways and private infrastructure. As a condition of those developments proceeding. As a result of that, the unit owners essentially through. Their association fees or charges have responsibility for maintaining the private roadways. And for the most part, maintaining the private utilities. I cite in this resolution that there is precedence and past policy adopted by the council. For some very limited services related to water and sewer. Essentially, regular flushing of the private water mains. Jetting of the private sanitary sewer mains and assisting on an emergency basis if there are clogged sewers. With jetting to, to clear those clogs. In addition, specific to Blue Heron, the city has had a commitment from the outset on maintenance of the lift station. So not proposing anything more there, but I would point out that this business about council authorizing. The water and sewer main maintenance, that was authorized by a resolution back in the year two thousand. Which set the basic parameters for entering into agreements with the four condo developments in town. I don't know that any of us are quite sure how it happened, but there's not such an agreement in place. That we, any of us can locate with the Blue Heron Association. I'd recommend and what the resolution in front of you does is extending. Subject to an agreement that would come back to council for adoption, that same deal, if you will, for Blue Heron. Based on further discussion, there was some receptivity from council at that work session. To the idea of doing bulk leaf collection from the private roadways, which we don't do presently. But the rationale there being, you know, the. Leaf collection is paid from the environmental fee that everybody pays, condo owners included, to the solid waste utility. And it's pretty analogous to what's done on the public streets. Leaves get picked up from in front of individual residences. So this resolution would allow for that. From a staff standpoint, we're not recommending anything beyond that. I can appreciate and understand and expect you will. Will hear some of the concerns of the condo owners. They pay taxes like everybody else. They do pay property taxes based on the market value of their properties. And there is a lesser. Array of public services provided, quite honestly, because it's private infrastructure. So this is the extent to which we as staff, I would recommend and our staff would recommend. The city providing services that aren't currently under contract. I think we've probably cleaned the sewers once or twice without an agreement, but. For Blue Heron. Obviously, council has discretion beyond that. But the basic thought here is A. With respect to Blue Heron or the other three condo developments in town with private utilities and private streets. A, a deal is a deal. And B, everybody, both the developer and folks that have chosen. To purchase homes in those very fine condo associations that we're glad to have. Were mindful that these are private utilities, private facilities. So with that, I'll be quiet. And if you're inclined to act on the resolution, I'd be more than happy if you had us waive, waive reading. I didn't realize we put to read it.
No problem. We're gonna not go to look for a motion quite yet. We're gonna allow the folks that are in the audience to speak. Remember, we can have one-on-one dialogue with them. We cannot communicate as a, a council as we do not have a motion on the floor. So if you have questions in particular to anyone that's up at the podium and want to ask that directly without communicating between us, that is perfectly fine. So. If anyone wants to speak on behalf of the association, jump on up.
James Brodkey, twenty-seven zero eight River Lane, Washington Highlands condo association. It appears of Blue Heron. When, when our, when, when I deal with the city in as. Taking over our lift station was one situation. Blue Heron had their lift station taken over. Ours is a more modern lift station. And we were just told that the city is not going to take yours over, period. Quit talking to us. We don't want that discussion anymore. There seems to be. Some different. Standards for. Let's see, cooperation through the city. And it's just because we're, we're always told we're just private property. Go away. You know?
You're told to go away. It was politely though, right? Please go away.
But our, yeah, but you know, our, our taxes are paid. And through our assessments, because our property. Is. Higherly assessed, I guess, is to that. You know, we contribute to the city. As in every private property individual does. I, I think this precedent that we're setting here. As Greg said, there are four associations, you know, within the city. Is the. City ready to. Service the other three?
All I can say at this point, Mr. Brodkey, that that is a, that is an historic fact that the city made that commitment upfront with Blue Heron, which was the first of the four that now exist. That would be a separate matter if Blue Heron, excuse me, if Washington Highlands wanted to make that request. Whether to do that or not is, the, the lift station maintenance is not on the table tonight. That was identified. When we met with these folks in July as sort of a status quo. The city did not, did not opt, nor did the developer insist, I guess. On maintenance of the lift station as a condition for whether it's mahogany run. I don't know that they have lifts. I think they do have a lift station. Nor Washington Highlands, nor Rivers Edge. That would be a fair question to ask of the council. That's not what is before the council tonight. We're taking. The situation with the Blue Heron Lift Station as a given because it was in the original agreement. But then the request has been for services above and beyond that. So I'm not saying yours isn't a fair question. And maybe there's inconsistency there. You might want to argue the case. That's not in front of the council tonight.
No, I, I, I understand that.
Sure.
But it's just that the council has to be aware that in the future there will be more requests. And once the precedent. Is set and these, sometimes the agreements. You know, they seem to be located. But we can't find any site drawings for our association. Anywhere within the city. And they weren't built five, a hundred years ago. But there are no plans for that association. And trouble is locating the Buffalo Boxes.
Oh, yeah.
Is number one.
Yes, we appreciate you, you folks spent a lot there.
That, so I, I just, you know, there is precedent being set. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And it wasn't one of Mr. Brodkey's points, but I had meant to point out during my comments, clearly if the council were to agree to. Then it's probably one of the lesser things, the leaf collection. We would probably then follow up with a resolution saying that should be offered to each of the condo associations as an operating service. Another dialogue as far as the issue of lift station maintenance, because that was specifically called out for right or wrong in the nineteen ninety, ninety-one Blue Heron Agreement.
So that speaks a little bit different as to taking an ongoing one that was not into an agreement when. The said association was built. So I think that's kind of the difference that Greg is alluding to here. Is when Blue Heron was built, that was part of their deal with the city. Versus Washington Highlands did not have that as a deal with the city when they were being built. I think that would be the, the only difference that I would see there. Good point, but I, I, I do see just a small difference in the fact that it was agreed upon when building.
Talking about the lift station?
Correct.
Okay, my understanding of that is it was agreed to and the city has been mourning it ever since. I, am I wrong about that?
City has been what?
Mourning.
Mourning?
Very sorry because it costed the city more than they ever thought it would.
Well, I, I'll defer to our city engineer on that one, Matt. And I know you're fairly new to this.
Yeah, but he's, he is new.
But he heads up that department, so.
I don't have exact facts or figures regarding all the maintenance that has gone on. Since the lift station has gone into the ground and into operations. I know recently we have done some internal rework of the lift station. And I believe we are looking at trying to upgrade the control panel and getting. Better electrical source out there. So we have better reliability of the equipment. Basically, we're running single-phase. Power to three-phase equipment and would like to upgrade that. So to Bonnie's point, yes, it is a expenditure, but it's the same expenditure that we use with a lot of our other lift stations. So. Don't know how comparable that is, but each lift station just its own, has its challenges and economic hardships.
We've not seen fit in any subsequent approvals for the city to take on lift stations. I think that's fair to say.
I, if, if at all possible, I try and defer from any type of mechanical lifting or pumping. Because it's just a long-term burden financially and resources.
Again, that's not an issue that's in play here tonight. Nobody's presuming that we would reneg on that service to Blue Heron. It does pose at least a fair policy question as, as was expressed by Mr. Brodkey.
Anyone else wish to speak on this?
If you're later, you can tag team at a few issues.
If multiple people want to come up there, that's more than welcome. You have a spokesperson?
Bob Boltnick, fifteen fourteen, Blue Heron Drive. We'd like to see a copy of this agreement once it's ready to go. Turn it into our, we'll turn it to our lawyers and have them evaluate it and then we'll go from there as where we're going to go.
You do understand the scope of services we're talking about. Obviously, you'd want legal counsel to look at it.
I, I looked over your resolution that you had there. You're also bringing in roads and things that is not in the resolution, mahogany run. You had emailed me Thursday this week, or last week, Thursday.
Oh, our maintenance agreement with mahogany run on their water and sewer mains.
Correct.
Just to, just as an example of here's what one looks like.
Well, we had asked for a copy of it so we could take it to our lawyers and we don't have that yet. You said you're working on it now.
Right.
I received, I believe your resolution Saturday morning, about ten in the morning, it came through.
That is correct.
So we haven't had time to take it to our lawyers and have them look this stuff over. And that's what we're going to do before we sign anything.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, is that it from the folks in the audience before we kick it back to council? Yep. All right, looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Darla. Council discussion. Jeff?
Something that we need to table until we, they have all their information?
Oh, I, I guess our thought was if the council is agreeable to the concepts in the resolution, which is. The water and sewer main maintenance activities, pretty much like in the agreement we have, the agreements we have with the other three associations. And adding leaf collection, what I'd, in a perfect world, what I'd like to do is. Like this week, get out to Bob on behalf of the association, a draft agreement. And if they're okay with it or have adjustments that our city attorney and I could agree with to bring back to council. We get it back in front of you folks as quickly as we can. I wouldn't mind if we were picking up some of their leaves yet this fall. We're on the verge of that. But that, that remains to be seen. Oh, let's go ahead.
We are instructing our contractors to dump the leaves on River View Drive. We abut the property there, so.
That's perfectly fine as things stand today. Yep.
Correct.
Yep, okay, thank you. So as soon, within a reasonable period of time, I'd still love to do it by the end of October. If they're happy with what they see as a staff document that's consistent with your direction tonight. We'd have it back to council.
You want this to give direction to you to go ahead to perform that draft agreement to get out to Bob and his association? To come back before us once again?
Correct. This is basically saying, yeah, we're.
Yeah, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, we're still open to this water and sewer main maintenance, like with everybody else. That offer stands. We're doing something new when it comes to leaf collection from in front of the buildings on the private roads. And I guess the, the, the balance of it is, in response to the request that came forward from Blue Heron. The council is not offering to do anything else in the way of services to maintain that private infrastructure.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
Council discussion. Council discussion, any further?
I don't view it as a deadline.
Bonnie?
I would be all right with number one with the water and everything, that's okay. But if you start this thing with the leaf pickup on their roads that are not built for these dump trucks and these heavy equipments, the other ones are going to come and ask for the same thing. And, you know, like this month, two people, two citizens who wanted to, what did they want to do? Do, put storage on their property? I was reading the minutes and they, they were denied this. And it's all because there's these rules and your property doesn't fit this and fit that. And you, and the PUDs would come and say, well, we know what your rules are, but we just, if we take care of it, then we can cheat, right? Okay, I mean, the way I said that maybe wasn't right. We can cut corners if we promise to take care of this. In other words, the road going through their condominium is really a driveway. That's the way it's described in the, in the original paperwork.
It's a private drive.
So if you keep putting all these dump trucks for garbage pickup and all that, it's going to wear the road out faster. And they will want it fixed. And there's, I'm just telling you, I'm voting no, that's all. I mean, I'm sorry.
Well, we're in council discussion, Bob, with all due respect. And I just, yep, just hang on, just hang on because we're in council, it's, it's an order thing, sorry. I will let you speak in just a second. Yes?
I was just going to say to Bonnie's question, and that's a fair question or concern. I wouldn't presume to bring an agreement back to you. If the council is inclined to look, to say, we want, we want to offer that service, there'd need to be a provision in any agreement that would exempt the city from any claims related to wear and tear or damage to their streets from the routine use of those streets for that activity. The garbage trucks run up and down the streets right now. So I'm not saying that your concern's not legitimate at all.
I know.
But I'd also want something in there saying, the association effectively saying, we're not going to come back on the city for damage to our streets due to normal use in the, in the course of providing this service. Yeah. And actually looking at their pavement cross-section from the original plan, I think Matt commented, it's fairly typical of what you see on a rural roadway. Probably the biggest difference is that it drains to the center, which often we, we don't do one even on rural streets. But the pavement thickness is comparable to what you'd see on.
Right, but an agreement would be in place to hold us harmless should one of our trucks that are heavy cause any damage, which they shouldn't, but it could happen. Fair point. Tim?
They do presently is what we heard, and frankly.
I thought the lawn care guy picked up all the leaves when he cut the grass. At least that's what it was when I used to do it, that we had to haul everything out of there, so it was, you would want, I would think you wouldn't want someone to push all the leaves up to the road and then let them sit there and get blown all over because the wind blows right through there like it does waiting for the city to come pick it up.
If you'd like to come address, go ahead.
Yes, they do pick the leaves up, they truck them out here, but we're going to put them on River View Drive. All the people's leaves over there blown to our yards too. It's no different in any city street, they blow all over the place, so.
That's what I meant, is it's easier for him to pick them up when he cuts grass and comes through than to try pushing them out by the road and then wait because you know how windy it is there that it's going to end up over on the other side, but.
That's what you currently got going in the whole city right now, they blow all over the place.
Oh, it just, yeah, so Bob, is it our understanding correctly that this is a service that Blue Heron would want to have along the private roadways?
It is, yes, that's what we're asking to have the leaves picked up. But until we can get this agreement looked at and figure out whether we're going to agree to whatever's in it or not, we're going to pile leaves over on River View Drive.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify based on Tim's question and how it has worked. I can see there's some advantage saying, well, they're at least out at the end of the street, at the end of the driveway at River View Drive.
That's what you're doing now. I'm sorry, what? You're taking them all and putting them over on River View Drive now? We're going to, we have property out of Butts River View Drive.
But it would be your preference, assuming there's an agreement that's acceptable to the association?
Correct.
To pick them up in front of the units? Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page there.
Any further questions for Bob while he's up there? Not that he has to get all his exercise in tonight. Anything further for Bob? No? Any further discussion among council before we send this to vote? Again, this is just pretty much instructing staff to go forward with a draft agreement to get over to the Blue Heron Association so they can have their lawyers look at it, hopefully get it signed, bring it back to us, look it over one more time. Obviously, our legal counsel will look at it, we will get a chance to look at it and sign it and hopefully get these guys taken care of and start helping out the best we can with the agreements that are in place and previous agreements that were in place, so. With no further ado, roll call. Amanda?
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? Bonnie Shimalunas?
No.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thank you for waiting two hours through a painless meeting here, so we appreciate it. On to C, purchase or request to purchase Camion IMT 300 brine sprayer. The recommended action is a motion to authorize city staff to purchase one Camion IMT 300 brine sprayer and storm commander GPS flow controller from Casper's Truck Equipment in the quoted amount of $21,884 prior to the 2023-24 winter season to be purchased from existing Public Works Equipment Capital Budget as recommended by the Public Works Committee. Background on that, Matt, I assume?
Going to come forward, this is, as Matt comes up, we're not asking for a budget amendment. There are existing budgeted resources, things that came in below budget. But on something this big, we're not going to just presume to go out and buy it either.
When I came on board last, last year about this time, we were just in the leaf season and then prepping for winter. And one of the things that I realized is we do not have any means of pre-treating our roadways before a storm event, which is a very common activity used by a lot of municipalities, counties, and the state. And so I reached out last year to some suppliers, vendors, just to get some preliminary ideas, costs, and some additional background. The community that I came from, they were very proactive and would go out days before, which is a common practice. And as such, wanted to further our snow fighting activities in Two Rivers and looking at a change on how we do that. Part of my activities last year was putting together a actual formal snow policy, which again, we didn't have in place. It's still a work in progress with every storm event, everything changes, so to speak. And so what happened is early, or late July, Casper Truck did a pop-in visit with one of their units. Only a couple staff members were able to attend. So we scheduled a formal site visit with them. They came back and demonstrated their unit, which is basically the, what we're requesting to purchase. It is a brine sprayer that can hold up to 300 gallons of brine, liquid brine. The benefits of that is you can go out days in advance, pre-treat your roads, it dries on the pavement. And you don't have to go out then as the snow is falling and try and plow in snow, plow and salt the roadways and try and make the road safe. That brine will then become a liquid form again and take care of that first couple hours worth of snow event, depending on the snow density, severity. So we're looking at trying to increase our productivity. We can do that brining during normal business hours, which is a cost savings. And ultimately, by using brine versus regular rock salt, we're also saving about 20 to 30% on each type of snow activity. So it's a cost savings. So Casper Truck came back, demonstrated this unit. They were the only vendor that actually came to the table and set up some sort of demonstration. And so we asked them for a quotation. My maintenance staff, mechanics like the simplicity of the unit. And even my operators like the simplicity of operation of, of this unit as well. So as Greg mentioned, we did the first installment of the two dump trucks. And then instead of purchasing a brand-new skid steer, we opted to purchase the lease of our track skid steer out, also providing additional cost savings. So we have some flexibility in purchasing this piece of equipment.
This has been endorsed by the Public Works Committee as well, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. What is the cost of brine roughly?
Had that answer, but I don't know it off the top of my head. Right now, we do purchase brine from the county and we pre-wet the salt, the rock salt as it comes out. So it'd just be additional brine, but it's like $2.30 a gallon or something like that.
Is that roughly cheaper than salt?
Right now, this year's salt cost will be about $87, $88 a ton, so.
That compares cheaper than salt?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And I think you kind of answered my second question. We don't have a holding tank in this budget that I saw before me, but you just said that you bought it from the county. Therefore, we would not be having a holding tank, we'd be going to the county grounds? Would that be correct?
Presently, that's what's holding our brine that we presently use. We would just have to get the county to come and refill it more often.
Got it.
So, and this would not be used on all streets. It's just on our major corridors that we salt with presently.
Perfect. Now, I think you mentioned this to me when we were discussing this, you know, like 300-gallon tank on a truck doesn't sound like a whole lot, but is, what's the application rate or how many lane miles can you treat?
We're looking at an application rate, normal application rate of about 35 to 40 gallons per lane mile. And on a 300-gallon, it's roughly 10 miles, lane miles. So actual roadway is half or thereabout. So you'd be looking at about five miles of roadway versus 10 lane miles, so.
How much do we do? How much is our salt route?
About 20 miles.
About 20 miles, okay, for times.
Yep.
Anybody else questions for Matt as long as he's up there?
And it goes in existing trucks that we have now, correct?
Correct, we can just put it on one of our flatbed one-ton trucks, most likely our superintendent's truck, which does not have a plow or any type of salting unit on it presently. And primarily during a snow event, he's driving around and checking on the other crews or in an actual truck dealing with it. So it's an available unit that we don't have to buy another truck.
Anybody else's questions?
Per, per event, yeah, it would take about two to four dump truck loads during a snow event. That would be saving by pre-treating. Something like that, yeah.
Bonnie?
Is this brine going to be on every street, even like dead ends?
Oh, as I mentioned before, it's just where we presently salt. So it's only about one, about 25% of our.
I just didn't hear you say that.
Nope, not a problem.
Anybody else? All right, see none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, did we put a motion? I didn't think so. I think we invited Matt up here right away. My bad.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Scott, seconded by Darla, caught myself. I didn't think we did. Jack, you didn't kick me. He came close, though. I can feel you. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, motion carries. On to D, our final one. It is consideration of land transfer agreement between the City of Two Rivers and the Two Rivers School District for L.B. Clark. Recommended action, motion to approve the agreement to transfer the land to the Two Rivers School District. Sounds familiar, but go ahead, Greg.
In fact, I will be recommending we table this, but if I could indulge you with just a little bit of narrative on it. If you look at the certified survey map that was included in your packets, I think it's toward the, well, page 185, 186, 187. Really, the map is on 185 of the packet. Just, just to recap, that, the map as provided does accurately depict the city's intent based on council's past action. The roughly seven acres the city owns to the north and to the west of the six acres now owned by L.B. Clark would become school property. That's Lot One totaling 13.136 acres. And the city would retain out of this whole area 2.15 acres shown as Lot Two in the northwest corner there. The only concern I had when I, and I was on vacation a good part of last week, I returned to the office and said, okay, let's just line the certified survey map up with the agreement for purchase of real estate. The, the agreement for purchase of real estate does say right in the beginning that the seller, the city agrees to sell and the buyer, the district agrees to buy upon terms herein named, et cetera. An approximately seven-acre parcel of real estate described and depicted in Exhibit A. Well, I think it would be helpful then to have an interim, if you will, CSM, one that simply divides the existing city nine acres into two parcels, one that we're going to sell to the district, one that we're going to retain. So while the CSM reflects where we want to end up, it's not particularly useful as a point of reference the way the agreement for purchase of real estate is written up. So we either need a new CSM or we need to really modify the agreement for sale of real estate. And preliminary discussion with the city attorney, if we want to be able to provide a warranty deed and title insurance to the school district, we really need a certified survey map that shows the precise parcel we are selling, not simply that parcel combined with the, with what the school already owns. I did advise Diane Johnson, the district administrator of this, on Friday. Told her I'm pretty confident we can bring it back to the council at the work session meeting next Monday. Send an email off on Friday afternoon to the surveyor at Kapoor who produced this survey. Didn't hear from him today, maybe he's out of the office today, and we'll follow up. So everything's in line except we need a document to use that's a truly accurate, accurately structured attachment to the purchase agreement. You know, just for further reference and not, not to beat on it, but in addition to keeping Lot Two in city ownership, that easement for the underground electric line is shown there just to the east of the Lot Two that the city will keep. There's a blow-up of, well, over, near the left margin of the 25 by 25 utility easement for the sewer lift station that we talked about. Everything is here, it's just that we need that interim piece. And I expect we ought to be able to have that in time for the work session. If not, well, it'll be the meeting on October 2nd. But, and if you, and we'll bring back at that time the agreement for sale of real estate, which does provide for the other significant issues that were agreed upon between the district and the council, so.
And we are not going to bring this then to the floor at all, so we don't need a motion to table.
I guess that's true. Simply for the record, no action.
No action taken on this.
Second, ask a quick question. Is this holding up the school district from doing anything?
They are out to bid on their work and I don't believe it's delayed anything to this point. Yeah.
Okay, information only, you got that?
Just again, the regular work session next Monday, the 25th at 6:00 p.m. You've got in front of you a, the budget review schedule for Personnel Finance Committee meetings, a joint meeting with the Utilities Committee. We have moved those meetings to Thursday nights. That best meets the schedule for the committee. And the first meeting is next week, Thursday, 6 o'clock here in Chambers. Promises to be lots of fun, as budget always is. And then, yeah, your first regular meeting in October is on October 2nd. Room Tax Commission meets tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock here at City Hall, if anyone's interested. That's all I have.
All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by, somebody want to get out here? Tim, thank you. Counsel discussion. No discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you and good night.